Session as we further on through the agenda. Okay, so are there, those are my adjustments to the agenda. Does anyone have anything else? No, okay, review and approve, oh no, review and approve the board minutes of April 12th. I wasn't here, so I can't do that.
Me neither.
You were not here either. Okay, so would someone who was here make a motion on that, please?
Sure, I moved that we approved them as written.
Great. Is there any discussion from anyone who was here? Any corrections?
Just is your last name spelled correctly? That's the only thing that I noticed.
No, there's a T. Josh gets, Josh um.
Can you change it?
Does that a lot.
Yeah, mine right, amazing. That's a hard one.
There you go.
Okay.
Alright, so.
I missed the.
We will make that adjustment then. So the minutes are as amended.
As amended.
You'll change your motion.
I changed my motion to say as amended.
As amended, okay, wonderful. Anything else? Any objections? If there be no objections, the minutes are passed. Communication and public comments, do you have something?
Yes, I do. Again, this year, the Grafton Grange will be working with the youngsters in the school making wreaths. And on the 30th at 1:30, they will be marching in the Memorial Day Parade, followed by the program over on the green at the library. So, we'd like to thank the school for allowing the Grange to do this, so that we can honor our veterans.
Outstanding. Great, any other public comments? No, okay, superintendents report.
Okay, those of you who were at the last SU meeting, I think got this, but if you weren't, here's a copy. Kind of a nice little guide the Secretary of State's office has put out. The open meetings, start covers and.
Yeah, everyone who's not.
SU meeting.
If you're not familiar with this, you really should.
I'll take.
Read through it, okay? I mean, there's just a couple of like, really goofy little things in here, but you, as board members, you do have to be careful. What you say, you do have to be careful if you're talking amongst each other outside of this meeting. You know, you can actually wind up with a quorum if you're not careful. Okay?
Especially as.
Yeah, especially as, yeah, you're right, exactly. So again, it just, I know there's a lot of V S B A, this and that, the other things, but just try to get a little handle on it also. It also helps in terms of knowing what you can bring up and what you can't bring up at a meeting.
One of the things I like about this is it starts to talk about some of the electronic issues that we now have. And what's okay and what is not. But my recommendation is always to do the public's business right here in public. Because there's really no secrets. And do things pretty much. Somebody's gonna be interested. Okay, we at the SU have been busy as little bird dogs. The, I will have an assistant superintendent to bring to the SU board their appointment.
Nice.
Yeah, so, and we're very excited about this person. So that's, and by the way, the SU meeting is on Wednesday, the 23rd, 6:30 at the SU office. And in other news, Missy Wilkins, who's our grant manager, has been coping, is the right word, with the state's new requirements on submitting the consolidated federal grant. And how many things could they change in one year? They moved over to a completely different electronic format, which is really difficult to maneuver through. In part because we're not used to it, in part because it's really difficult to maneuver through. They required these continuous improvement plans, which you've heard about before, but now they've given us, did they do it in January? Gave us a format, said use this format for these continuous improvement plans. And then they said, and by the way, you're not gonna get your grant money until the continuous improvement plans from the supervisor union and all the schools are uploaded into this electronic program.
And they had wonky timelines for us too, as to when they wanted to set.
So, interestingly, the format that they gave us in January does not just simply cut and paste into the new electronic grant management. Why, I didn't even really need to say that, did I? I mean, we kinda knew that. It's like, how many things can they make difficult? And so, Missy miraculously got this plan done. We reviewed it a little bit at the SU meeting the last time, it still needs to be approved. And now we're torturing the principals because.
Yeah, well, it's, it's part of the job requirement.
Exactly. So, so now the principals have been working on these continuous improvement plans with a little bit of input from staff. I mean, I guess in future years, there will be more input, but for us, everything has to be uploaded within a couple of weeks or, you know, so we're just trying to get it done right now. So, anyway, these plans reference grant-funded positions and strategies.
Right.
So, that's why they have to go into this, according to the state, why they have to go into this grant management system. Because some bureaucrat with little checkboxes is gonna come and say, okay, you know, do you have, you gave money to these schools for these reasons? Is there, why are they doing that? Do they have this in their plan? They go check, yeah, they got it.
Okay. How much, what do we have on C F Gs here?
We just, I'm sorry, do you want me to?
What are we funding, yeah?
Well, here, you're funding a full-time position.
A full-time, yeah, you're funding a full.
Right, at the moment, yeah. But there are numerous other strategies for professional development that we fund.
Right.
Through the grant as well. So in total, the C F G grant is 1.3 million dollars. It's not, it's all.
Not insignificant.
Not insignificant, so it's, we're jumping through the hoops and we're not enjoying them.
Yeah, after school, it funds after school and summer school as well.
Right, it, summer school.
Remedial support.
Program, remedial support for kids, after school.
Yep. Very important, very important work.
It funds the homeless school liaison that works with the high school folks, it funds the homeschool liaison with Molly Oldespeak, who works with the little kiddos here. So there are a lot of ways that the consolidated federal grant touches your community. It's just driving us crazy. We're gonna get there. In other news, the legislature is still meeting. Need I say more? If you can figure out what is gonna happen, I wanna know. Today, the governor scheduled a phone conference with all of us superintendents and sent out this plan, which I'll give you. Which is a framework, it's certainly not legislation. And then the phone conference didn't work, so.
That's because they didn't fund it properly.
Yeah, I think they didn't have that grant.
They didn't fund the phone, to pay the phone bill.
So, I don't, I don't really know. I mean, the last time we were asked for feedback, I didn't really feel like we were given a chance to give any anyway, so I'm kinda, kinda jaded about this. But this is the thing he sent out today, so you can see what he's proposing. He's, you know, it's kind of minute to minute of what's going on, and it's hard to follow. I mean, you can go onto Vermont Digger and look at things, but they're not always accurate, they don't really. So, he has been responsive to a couple of things that were concerns, and I guess the, the big concession in this that I seized on right away was, he was gonna leave your FY19 budgets alone. And that is new as of this morning, from what I understand. Because remember, right up till now, he's been saying, no, you know, your budgets are too high, da 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 da. So now I think, I think he's saying, okay, but we wanna do all these other things. And there's still a 50-plus million dollar hole, 158 million dollar hole. It's not going away. I wish they would just raise the taxes and fill it, so that they can get reset and get going. But that is not what the governor wants to do. There are a lot of, one, one of the board chairs, when I sent this out, had a look at it, it was actually David Clark, the SU chair, and he sent me an email back and commented something about magical thinking. His comment was that somehow money is gonna materialize from some of these initiatives, and there is no proof whatsoever. To make matters worse, for my figure, ran an article this morning about the staff to student ratios. I have no idea where they got that mon, those figures, no idea. But they're out there, and they're, they're not the same figures that were sent out, remember, a number of months ago.
Oh, yeah.
That whole come sent out was memos, a memo, actually, there were two memos. I don't have any idea where Vermont Digger got their numbers, but if you get questioned about it, that's about all I can say.
It's the magical thinking you just referenced.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I'm sure they figured it out from something, but the thing is, Vermont Digger isn't the one that figures out. Staff to student ratios, you know?
That being said, for those of you who haven't taken a look at it, the ratios here in this particular school are pretty good. And relative to the state, we're in very good shape.
Well, they were.
Well, from our numbers. From our numbers.
Vermont, Digger numbers were really low.
Yeah, from our numbers, since we actually have bodies here that can count.
On the two hands.
So.
We're small school, you know, but you do have both hands. Don't have to go to your toes though.
So who knows what's gonna happen up there? I don't. But I guess you'll find out in a couple of weeks.
Okay, that is?
That is.
Okay, Seela.
Hi, everyone. We are at 73 students still. Thirty-eight students are from Grafton, 35 are from Athens. The Grafton number went up by one, because we'd like to welcome the Pipe family, who joined us just after April vacation. Really nice, really, really nice youngster. He is in the. Whoops, sorry, just said it. He's really, they're really cool. Special ed numbers are still hovering around 20 percent. 504 is below 10 percent, so I'm not gonna give the exact number, just because it's such a small piece. Teacher appreciation week is this week. Thank you to the P T G for their lovely gifts. Everyone is eagerly looking forward to spending their M K T gift certificates. And we had a wonderful lunch, thank you. It's been feeding us for several days, actually. S back testing has finished. Every lovely third through sixth grader in this building has finished their S back testing. In two weeks, we are going to, the fifth graders will be taking the Vermont Science Assessment. So this is a new, this is different from the New Cap Science that was given to fourth grade last year. So it'll be the same group of students piloting, for lack of a better word, the V T S A. So we're gonna do that in two weeks. The students are gonna do a practice run next, next week, I think next Tuesday is what we're shooting for. It will be approximately a two-day assessment. But when I say two days, it's really, it's, I like to break up what could possibly be a two-hour test into multiple sessions. Because this is also an untimed test as well, so the children have as many days up until a certain cutoff to take it. And I said that's fifth grade only. So June and I, who is your board SIP, SIP secretary, she and I have started to look over the SIP here for Grafton Elementary School. During our April staff meetings, we did do, we did do our needs assessment for two of the goal areas, so for the academic and the school climate, excuse me, yeah, school climate, school culture, needs assessment. So we did a, it was Safe and Healthy Schools, excuse me, we did a five whys protocol, if anyone's familiar with it. And then we organized it on, I just love saying this word, the Ishikawa Fishbone Diagram. So it's just a way of organizing information, but it's a, it's, it's a, it's a cool way to present it, you know, because it, what it is, is it, it looks like a fishbone. You know, fishbones, you know, what the head is the problem of practice, and then here are the headers for what those possibly could be. And so we worked really hard on those, and there was some really, really meaningful discussion came out of those, of those meetings. So we're, we're looking good.
Eventually, the board's gonna need to.
Yep, I can have that for next time, no problem. I have started, we do have two open positions right now, if you remember, for a point for art teacher and a point to library media specialist. I've had more, there's been more luck with finding art teachers right now. So I have started interviewing. So, and I, my plan is to have an excellent candidate for recommendation for, to Mr. Kibbe, to then hopefully appoint here for next time. The library and media specialist, if anyone's out there who has a certified library and media specialist, please apply. We really need some applicants for that position. And then just wrapping up very quickly, thank you to Lynn for a wonderful Green Up Day a couple Fridays ago. Our students went to, we, we looked at town maps and figured out best places for students to be near their neighborhoods essentially, to help with their part of their community service piece of Green Up Day. And Lynn really helps us with the Athens portion, and so we had kiddos in their neighborhoods giving back, so that was really terrific. The visits with the Weston Playhouse have started. We have a wonderful theater teacher, Rachel, who comes on, who's, comes on Tuesday and Thursday, that's just started this week. And working with the, working with the kids on like theater games and theater direction, and eventually they'll move into staging and then, and then creating their own piece. And that's for grades five, four, and five. And they're really, really into it, and it's just so wonderful. Thank you to the Journey East company from Leland and Gray, they came and gave a performance for the students today. For those of you who don't know the Journey East program, it is something through Leland and Gray. It is a foreign exchange program of art and music and performance that the high schoolers there do in China. And then there are students from China who then come to Leland and Gray for the year as well. And so what the high school students do is they can only spend four weeks, they were there from like mid-March to mid-April in China. Cut off from cell phones and electronics and things like that, and traveled all around the country, doing the performance that they showed us today. And the other pieces, they also write and stage that themselves. And then there was a really great Q and A session afterwards, and first, we've had the pleasure of having them visit us three years in a row now. And it never ceases to amaze me how every single student cannot peel their eyes away from the performance, it's, it's that well-done. Our girls on the run will be doing their run in Brattleboro this weekend, so if anyone wants to go cheer on Grafton Elementary. It's a, it's a 3.2 K, I think.
It's a five.
Is it a 5K?
It's a 5K, which is 3.2 miles.
I am terrible at remembering that thing, thank you very much.
Need help with your metric conversions.
I do. I don't have my little slide ruler in front of me. And then just wrapping up, our spring concert will be Tuesday, the 23rd. The theme is show tunes, so.
What time?
Modern show tunes, so.
What time is that?
Uh, six.
And graduation is.
June 12th.
June?
At 6 o'clock as well.
It's the same day as the meeting.
Graduation?
June 12th, graduation.
Is sixth grade graduation at 6 o'clock. And for those of you who haven't attended before, one thing that's very unique about this graduation and how it's done is the students run the graduation. There's very, very little adult voice in the ceremony, and it just really captures, it makes it a very personal experience for, for all the children, and it's, it's a pleasure to be part of.
And we do ask the board members to show up, as they receive their diplomas, you know, they kind of walk the line and that kind of thing, so it's kind of nice to show up and.
Yeah, thank you.
Shake some hands.
Absolutely, and it's.
And Kiwaiden went well?
Kiwaiden went spectacularly.
Excellent.
Yeah, yeah, and it was, they only got ran down two days.
Not bad.
It was that week after April break, I don't know if everyone remembers, that April was kind of hairy. So, so they, and you know, the kids come home and that's all they talk about for weeks afterwards, and they'll talk a lot about it in their personal essays that they'll read as well. It's a, it's a really, it's a really amazing experience for those kiddos.
It is, it's fabulous.
So you said that the, the division now is Grafton 38 and Athens 35?
Correct.
Okay, just the opposite of what was last week.
Yes, we've had some move, we've had some move-ins and move-arounds, yeah, absolutely.
Flops constantly.
Yeah, sure does.
Constantly.
Yeah, it is, it's.
Okay, thank you, Seela.
Thanks.
Great. Board's goal setting, okay? You have something to say on this topic?
Well, sure, I'll say some things. I, I don't know if you wanna set board goals, let, let me start that way.
Okay, historically, we have not, right.
I thought you said we had to for a set to.
No.
SU meeting.
No, I don't think you do.
Okay.
What you have been obligated to do because of your Act 46 Alternative Structure application is to meet with all the other boards. And part of that meeting, the idea of that meeting is to talk about, are there other ways that you can collaborate with the other boards in the district? So, this goals piece is in the Act 46 Alternative Structure Plan, but I intentionally wrote it as a voluntary action. Yeah, just because this isn't really something you have done, and of course, you function perfectly well without them, but, you know, I don't know. You're about to launch into a whole new world here, without me, and with some new folks on the board, so, you know, maybe, I don't know. Do you wanna talk about whether you wanna have goals, or whether you're happy with the way things are? That's all I'll do.
Okay.
The other, uh, no, I lied, I'll say one more thing.
Okay.
So in the packet, I put the SU goals.
SU goals, right.
Which we had looked at at the last SU meeting, just FYI. What Rockingham did the other day, this last page, page 26 in your packets. This was actually compiled by Karen Bukowski, the principal of the middle school, because she thought the boards could use something to go off of. You know, like, here's what board goals look like. So, Rockingham used these and chose four or five of them and kind of wordsmithed them, and they, they did create the beginning of a goals document using this particular piece. And I think they found it more useful than the SU goals, but. That's, okay, now I'm done.
Now you're done. Okay, so, this is something that's on the table, since we have not discussed this before, I'd like people to think about whether they feel that this is valuable, something that we need to do, or if it's just inherent in who we are. Okay, my two senses, it's inherent in who we are.
This is what we do.
I mean, but if, 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 if other people feel that we wanna go through an actual goal-setting exercise, we can certainly contemplate doing that. So, why not, everybody, take a look at this, put it back on the agenda for next month, and see whether you feel that there's value to be derived from actually sitting down and delineating what we do.
Yeah.
Or just, Harold and I have been here a lot of years, and.
What's kind of what we do. It's us.
It's us. So, anyway, okay, let's, let's just put it on the agenda for next month, they have, everybody had a chance to review these documents. Okay, paperless meetings, I love this idea, so.
I think it was Katrina asked. So I, I wanted to show you what three of the other boards are doing.
Oh, I thought you were gonna show us that we were gonna go where that first photo was, because I was like, I would do goal-setting if we did it there. I mean, if we, if we wanted to do like a nice retreat or something.
I put that picture on my computer too, and I keep thinking, is there an elk there? So, Seela, if you could go to the right-hand side of the web. Further to the right, and now down. Okay, so under those important links on the right-hand side, there's each of the Westminster, the Rockingham, and now the high school all have their, their board meeting documents there.
Oh, I see.
So, here's, I mean, here's a nice thing about this, is that the public, if they're home watching on TV, they can look at all the same documents you have in front of you.
Okay.
Okay, because they can access it right through the W N A S U website, which is nice. Now, the other thing is, we don't mail packets to these people anymore, so we are saving a little bit of money, and out here, sometimes the mail, I don't, I don't know what happens to mail out here, but.
Mail up here?
Sometimes, yes, and, well, you know, I walked into Saxton River Post Office the other day, and there were the, the post office boxes from Cambridge Board, and I said, oh no, this can't be good. So, anyway, so it saves mailing, and, and we just, we just post documents into these folders that I'll show you in just a minute. Now, the thing about it is, you have to have access to the internet at home, so if you're a board member, without that, this isn't gonna work. We do have a couple, we do still produce packets for these, these boards, but not for everybody. There are a couple of board members that want packets, so my Sue is producing them, a few anyway, and she just does, and they stop by and pick them up, so.
No obligation, I'm just out of curiosity, like, any obligations, like the town parks offices or anything like that, they actually have physical packets?
No, no, it's, no, because we don't, all we post, when we warn a meeting, is, is the, the warning in the agenda, it's not the whole package.
Okay.
And in fact, this is much more transparent, because here's every.
Yeah, everybody gets.
Everybody can. Everybody can look at everything in there.
I'll have.
So, if you, Cela, if you click on the Ro- let's click on Rockingham.
Wake my computer.
And then, um, wanna reorder the, the names of, oh, there it is, the.
Twenty-eighteen.
Five, yeah, click on that one, double-click. Okay, so there are all the documents that Rockingham looked at on Monday night. Um, there's three school reports, the principals just uploaded them. Uh, there was an engineering report on their boiler. Um, the agenda is there, the minutes are there from the previous meeting, and then, uh, they just filled the board position, it was somebody who was in.
Okay, so just, just in, in regards to actually conducting the meeting, that they conducted with a projector?
Well, sometimes both ways.
Does everybody walk in with a tablet?
Yes.
All right.
Both.
Or a phone, or whatever they might be.
Both, yeah.
Okay.
Um, we, what, we do at the board meetings is, we usually have a stack of, of, what do you call it?
Chromebooks.
Chromebooks. So if board members don't have their own computer, you can, we provide one right there.
I see.
So, you can look at stuff there, you can look at it in your own computer, obviously. Um, and then the other thing, sometimes we do, is we project them the way we are here.
Yeah, I mean, we're all, worse, since we're here in this room, it's very simple for us to do that also.
Right, but, and sometimes, like, it's useful to, to project it, um, if, if we're kind of studying a document very closely, but it, but, you know, if you click on any of those, they'll, and you can if you want, so, I mean, they'll open right up and they're regular.
Right, well.
So there's Keith's principal.
Beautiful.
Yeah. So, we've kind of worked the bugs out of this, it's, I mean, it's nice. It's a, um, question of whether it works for you as board members, it's, it lets you, you know, you get five minutes over lunch, or fifteen minutes over lunch, and you've got your computer with you, you can.
Go through everything.
Go through everything, stuff, you know, without waiting for the package, or, uh, which sometimes never does, I have to agree with that.
Okay, um, it's operating, I don't know if it really require a motion of any kind, or just a discussion of like, do we want to do this?
Well, if there's a consensus to do it, I'll do it.
All right, let's.
Can you still have to email us and say that it's up?
Oh, yeah.
That would be.
That'd be helpful.
Well, right, so what you'll still get, you know, an email is a, uh, the notice of the meeting.
Or, and say that the documents are now available.
As soon as you get that, you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Because we, eh, the nice thing about this is actually, sometimes documents don't come in quite, you know, everything isn't there seven days before the meeting, and so I can add documents as time goes along, but we try to have them complete a couple, everything there a few days before.
Okay. Does anyone have a problem with this?
Yeah.
No?
I think it's worth trying.
All right. If, if nobody's got a problem with it, we're on. If anybody has a problem and needs, needs a, needs a packet mailed out, then contact Sue and say, hey, sorry, you know, I decided I don't like the interweb, they're looking over my shoulder all the time, and so I want paper, but if not, then we'll not take paper.
So, what you'll get from me is, um, once our tech person sets up this folder, um, you'll, eh, you, I'll, I'll send you the, uh, access to the folder through, it's a Google Doc.
A Google?
Yeah, that's what they, everything is. Uh, you can either access it through your Google account by going to your Drive, which is in those, see the little dots at the top, or, yeah, those little nondescript dots are actually everything Google. And, uh, the Drive is one of those icons there, yeah, the Drive, which we're already in it. So, um, that would, if we click on that, it would go to Cela's Drive, that would be a scary thing to see.
You don't want to see what's in there.
Yeah. So, so you can access it that way, or you can just go through the W N E S U website and click on the.
Cool, all right, so it's, it's now a trial program, if we find it doesn't work, we'll back out of it, it sounds great, so, I love that. Paper. Um, approve the principal's contract, I would suggest that we go into executive session to go over that prior to that approval.
Yeah.
Um, discuss and approve the insurance resolution.
I don't know if you need to do this.
You should approve it.
Okay, you have to approve it.
What's that? Um, so this was something David Clark, the S U chair, asked me to produce last week when things were on the verge of, at, at that point, the union, the Vermont NEA, had proposed basically taking over the entire insurance program. And we were all going, wait a minute, we just negotiated this for two years and put this in place. So, um, that proposal has changed, and now the proposal that's being put forward legislatively is that it stays the V-HI board, there might be some changes to the composition of the V-HI board.
So basically, this is not really necessary then?
I don't think so, at this point.
Okay.
But it's something you should, as citizens, be keeping an eye on, I think, and if things start going south, call up your legislators. But I think they, heard, the legislators and the governor, hopefully heard loud and clear from everyone who's been involved in this for the last two years. You know, this was, this was tough enough as it was.
Good. Okay, so no action, action.
I guess.
Like it. Um, did the warrants go around for signing?
We've had them.
If he hasn't signed, look at him, do so. Um, what do you put, was that?
It's just a law.
Yeah, there are a couple.
We're looking at these.
Yeah. Okay, we, we do this during the meeting.
Oh, okay, just not here.
Okay, sorry, no problem.
So some of them.
Yeah, we just kind of sign, we sign them during the meeting. You can, you have the option of actually, like, that's a packet, okay, so you can glance through it if you want to, you can just put a signature on it if you feel like everybody else has done, done that.
This is your first meeting with warrants?
The entire packet.
Well, you'll have to look through there, there'll be some that'll just be Athens, there'll be some that'll be Grafton, there'll be some that'll be Athens and Grafton.
The.
Okay, so this is a, this is basically your approval to have these bills paid.
There's a summary.
They probably already have enough signatures on each one anyway at this particular point in time.
I don't have none Grafton signatures.
Oh, you don't have none Grafton signatures.
And we haven't seen these at the last couple meetings.
Oh, you haven't seen them, okay.
June and I have been too, so.
All right, all right, sorry, didn't realize.
You wanna, this is where it needs to get the number of signatures to actually pay the bill. This is a summary, but then these are the actual invoices.
Okay. Thank you.
And there's some that say Athens, which you don't sign.
Right.
And then there's Grafton, and then there's Athens-Grafton.
Exactly.
Got it.
Got it, okay.
And these are available at the S U office, if you want to peruse them in a more leisurely way.
And when we don't have.
Which is kind of a, you know, as you're getting used to being a board member and sort of, they're interesting, because you see, oh, this is where the money is going.
Yeah, and this is the meat of it, right?
Right.
Exactly, exactly. And you'll notice that I electronically sign every one on the top, because I, I see them even when there's, uh, when there's not meetings going on, to keep the pay, to keep the payment cycle going.
Okay.
So I get, I get them electronically and sign them electronically, like I did today, every two, once every two weeks, I sit down and sign like six warrants or so, go through them all electronically. But anyway, they come up, they should come every meeting, if they don't, always.
Yeah, I don't remember how many we decided have to sign, was it like two?
Any two.
Two, so.
Oh, okay.
But more than marry her, I guess.
Exactly. Well, it doesn't hurt, like I said, to look, you know, look through it, some of them, see, the payroll ones are like, if that, see, that's payroll, I mean, so that's just gonna be, it is.
Okay.
You can go look and say, oh my gosh, but, you know, but you've already, but technically, as a, as a board member, you already approved every salary's anyway, so.
I understand that part, okay, great, thank you for that.
Sure, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you hadn't seen, you guys had never done that.
Newbies, thank you.
No problem. Okay, um, any appointments or resignations at this point? No, good. Um, we'll wait for director's comments for a second. Our next meeting, what is, is June fourth?
Biggest decision. So, June fourth is the all-boards-at-the-high-school meeting.
Yeah, it's a Monday.
That's a Monday night. Um, but that's not a regular business meeting for you.
Right.
And the question is, when to have a regular business?
Our normal, our normal scheduled, this, I don't have a calendar for.
It would have been, the normal scheduled meeting would be June fourteenth.
Which is also the day of the high school graduation.
Correct.
Right.
Now, that does not preclude us.
You could have the meeting, I just.
Is anyone, is anyone here scheduled to go to the high school graduation? Okay. Does anybody have any objections to holding the meeting without Chris being here? Okay. All right. Was that? Let's see what's on.
Is there seven objections?
I'm gonna have some appointments, I mean, I guess I can make them in writing.
Could we do it the week before?
Or you can do it on Monday.
If you want me to, whatever, whatever's.
Well, I guess that's the other option, would be to.
Another date.
Or we could reschedule the meeting, I mean.
We're going out of Thursday.
Would we want to do a meeting before graduation on the twelfth? Graduation's at, it, it just, it may be a little loud.
Oh, before sixth grade, right?
Well, we've done that before, actually. We've done that a lot of times.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a good option.
Has that worked in the past?
Yeah, what graduations, we said.
At six, if we were to meet at five?
Six, if we could meet at five?
Five, yeah.
On the twelfth?
On the Thursday.
No, it's a twelfth.
Uh, Tuesday, the twelfth.
Tuesday, the twelfth. Six, twelve, at five P M.
Five P M.
Yeah, that, we've done that many times.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Thank you for bringing that back up again, because, yeah, we've done that, we tend to do that a lot, um, just 'cause, gets everybody here.
Yeah.
And we're gonna be here anyway. Perfect. Good call, good call, thank you. Okay, um, director's comments. Lynn?
Um, I just wanted to thank Cela for letting the kids come play in Athens and helping us out there. They covered a lot of territory for us, actually.
No, just heard great things about Kuwaiten. Natalie, she went crazy with it, so.
Oh.